Why don't you begin by telling us why, again, you're running for city council? And how your presence on the council would make any difference?
Well, I got a little worked up over the direction of politics in the last couple of years. After 2003, I concentrated on my career and finished out teaching in 2010, retired in June of 2010. And then, in recent years, and my mom died in 2012, at 99, she had a good life, so I had extra time. And as I started to follow the issues, I felt there's this drift in both the ability of the council to direct and manage the staff and in the coherence of the development of policy as to what growth was about, what the interests of the community were, what the common interest was versus the special interest. And felt that with my experience in politics, having gone back to the days when there were serious ruptures between the Beers, Beerwall Norton faction and the Enid Pearson, Renzel, Byron Sher faction, that I had some sense of what the city was about and the potential that we weren't working toward. In other words, especially in terms of communication, setting policy, and having some sort of commonly accepted goals. And so those were the ideas that got me going. And then, when I came up with the program I did to put on the ballot, I strategically picked some issues that would provoke a discussion and perhaps strategically slow down the wheels of so-called progress to the point where policy became more deliberate along the lines that I said I was trying to work towards. In other words, I think we have to slow down the building of office space vis-à-vis housing if we're ever going to achieve a balance in jobs housing. And we have to find ways in which to make the housing work with the existing street plans and everything and with F-grade intersections and the potential of high-speed rail in the corridor, a rail corridor here, the Caltrain corridor. I thought those things needed to be addressed directly. So I said, well, let's have moratorium on that and discuss it. Let's figure out what we're going to do over here on this Page Mill, El Camino access because this whole thing right over here is a significant problem that needs to be managed. And then, with the big Stanford redevelopment going on over here, at the same time the California Avenue project is going on here, I thought that there wasn't this effort to kind of coordinate activities that the city is doing. I joked that it's getting your albatrosses in a row, you know, we're not getting our ducks in a row anymore, we're getting our albatrosses in a row. We have serious issues that need to be managed in a more deliberate, coordinated way. And I think government is the, local government's, a perfect vehicle for that. I support a nine-person council. I think a city council at nine will be more capable of discussing and representing. If I wanted to make, if I were to make a charter change in council size, I think that would be the time to consider things like an elected mayor, district elections, things like that. A seven-person council with a couple people recusing themselves for connections to Stanford or something, some issues I don't think you'd get a quorum even, much less a vote that reflected the will of the community.
So let me cut you off because we need to move along with some questions here. So you've laid out a lot of concerns about growth and development.
Specific ones that I mentioned in my ballot statement, yes.
So I'm wondering what specifically you would advocate if you were on the council to rein in that, that especially the office growth you've alluded to. How do we curtail that, given that current zoning allows for a substantial additional amount of office development?
Well, I think if the priorities of the planning department are to create housing, then it's a matter of how staff time is allocated in the approving of permits and things like that. I think a lot of the office space that got built sailed in as the departmental changes were made in planning to accelerate the permit process so that a person could remodel their bathroom in 30 days rather than 100 days. Also facilitated larger developments going through in a quicker time, such that people ended up in front of the council with architectural design, traffic concerns, also the allowing of underparked facilities and things like that, more square footage, transferred bonuses, all those types of things were incitements and incentives rather than regulators of the kind of development that went on.
So most of the development that's been approved, however, has been approved under the zoning, under the current zoning. We'll get to PC projects in a second. But most of what you're objecting to and what a lot of people are reacting to are projects that simply meet the zoning. We might have quarrels over their design, but they meet the zoning. So we're a long way off from changing zoning under the current plan because we're going through comprehensive plan review and then zoning ordinance changes would follow that. Is it your belief that something needs to happen more quickly than that to somehow...
Well, I think administratively, something can happen more quickly.
Like, for example?
Like, for example, any project that is of a certain magnitude is to, that could be challenged for environmental impacts, mitigations that might be required for traffic given the F-grade intersections we have and things like that. I mean, those are issues that the Architectural Review Board approved the plan over here on Sherman, but there was, there's still administrative that should have been in place before it got to the Architectural Review Board and clear sailing that could have been put into place and demands made. I mean, the common interest, the community interest, the public interest is greater, I think, than any current zoning for a development if there are negative impacts that affect the quality of life of neighbors and the city in general. So I think it's well within the power of the city council to set those rules, even as we are reviewing the comprehensive plan and setting up new criteria for what we want here in terms of final product in the community.
So there are a number of people who are upset about the ABAG mandates to add more housing, and I'm just curious where you stand on fighting ABAG and also just your general...
Well, I think the city is the sovereign entity. I mean, I do think the model cities law under which we are chartered has more power than ABAG, but I also feel that hand in hand, as I've said in the forums and in the neighborhood questionnaire, I think the emphasis in the housing element needs to be on small parcels, secondary units, accessory units, in-law units. Because a lot of these houses that are corner houses and houses on alleys that they're like over by Parkinson and Greenwood and that part of town, where there's a large lot on a corner, you could put an accessory unit, a 500 to 700-foot unit at the back with a carport, have the parking off the street, not a flag lot or anything like that. I was in politics when those were outlawed. But there's lots of, up to, you know, if ABAG wants us to have 2,000 units, I would say in the time period if we built 250, 300 even, it's a show of good faith that we have components in our housing plan that are distinctly addressing the issue while at the same time trying to not let housing and office space and everything get out of control. Because, I mean, that was one of my arguments about the Stanford project over here is that it's moving with such a force that we're going to have the New California Avenue, the Second Downtown coming on phase, and the housing over there at the Wells Fargo Bank, and the bigger units up by College Terrace. And I don't think we've foreseen all the difficulties that are going to be occurring in this little part of town, which has sort of some of the common dead-end street cul-de-sac problems that Barron Park and the Gardens have down in the part of town I live in. And I used to live downtown, so I've lived on Scott Street, Homer, Channing, Bryant, and Everett. I've lived most of my nearly 50 years here in the downtown area, but now I live on the south side, Barron Park.
One of the concepts that the city is pushing is transit-oriented development and housing near public transit, which one could argue does cover some of the parcels around here. So what's your feeling towards transit-oriented development and this kind of urbanism, construction near the train station?
Yeah, I support that. But I also think, I liked Yoriko's commentary in the last issue where she mentioned about a combined transit authority, where we start to get things coordinated in a way. As we resolve the high-speed rail thing, I think we might want BART all the way around the bay and the Southern Pacific Line. We still need a freight line to service San Francisco, but we might need a coordinated thing that does it. I don't see how, you know, we're at, what, six lanes each way, five lanes and then merging lanes, you know, 10, 12 lanes of traffic down on the Bay Shore, which 100 years from now will be underwater anyway, right? So of likelihood, we need to come up with some long-term solutions that are both energy-efficient and climate change appropriate, I believe.
Staying on the subject of transportation and moving to parking, I wonder if you could describe your views on adoption of a residential parking permit?
Yeah, I'm for that, and I, that's something I don't understand, why the grand plan is put in front of relief right away. I think if we're the rolling start, you can give every resident an on-street parking, every, you know, taxpayer, property owner, an on-street parking permit, and then see how many spots are left after you do that, and then start filling up the parking lots. And I know the idea, the urge for big data and planning is huge, but I think a relief for the people in Professoreville and downtown north, I used to live on Scott Street, I used to live on Everett Street, Bryant Street, I know even 20 years ago how parked up it was. So I, and I drove through there the other day talking to some people, and I don't go over that much where Johnson Park is, where I used to live, at 421 Everett there, and I was surprised at the number of condos and build-up that had taken place in the area of the Gateway Project downtown there at Litton. And those people need some relief, and I think a citywide permit process and then better utilization, which is good, that's in the study that they're buying, the consultant study, better utilization of the lots and things like that. And we're probably going to have to build another structure there and here, that's Second Downtown, right? I don't, if you come over here to lunch, it's crazy, right?
So the concern of the merchants, the retailers downtown, of course, is that there's no place for their employees to park. And so if you implement a residential parking permit program that keeps them out, then there's no place for their workers to park. How do you envision...
Well, I think they may need to pay their workers more or make parking a benefit of the benefits package in their compensation.
Well, that assumes that there's a place that can be bought with money.
That's right.
But I think many would argue that it's not, it's not a matter just of making it affordable, there's just not the supply.
Well, that's why I say we have to better utilize the supply we have. When I toured the Oak Tree Apartments the other day, I was surprised to see, you know, under there the AMZ Zion Church and, you know, 50 parking spots there. When I toured 801 Alma, I was surprised to see another 25 parking spots there, you know, and the, you know, so the people that say we have a walking problem, not a parking problem, have substance to their argument because there are parking spaces downtown. And I don't know how you rejigger the colored zone thing, but I know I'm kind of avoidant because of the park. The problem is, parking is big enough that you avoid downtown, you avoid California Avenue at certain times, and that's not good for business. And business, sales tax and stuff like that is the essence of the game in city government, right?
I want to shift a little bit and ask you about the Maybell project.
Yeah.
I know you've considered yourself a residentialist.
But I supported it. I supported the project.
But you supported Maybell?
And spoke at the Planning Commission and thought that the people that didn't want it were a little slow in stepping up to the plate, that they should have been involved in the planning. I mean, a couple of planning commissioners haven't said, if there's opposition, why aren't you here? And they didn't come forward. I liked the 60 units, I did not like the 15 units, I did not like the three stories, but once the plan got as far as it did, I thought, well, you know, I supported it because the need was so great for the 60 units. This new plan sounds better, more expensive, the PAHC plan was undercapitalized compared to the plan that this current real estate person is working on, that I read about in the paper the other day, but...
It seems like it happens quite frequently that the public isn't quite up to speed before a project gets to the council. I'm wondering, as a council member, would there have been something you have done earlier?
Well, I would have done it, I would have been on the council in 2003, and when this came up at the Palo Alto Neighborhood Discussion in 2003 at the old Mitchell Park Community Center, they raised the issue of Wilkie Way, traffic on Wilkie Way. And I expanded it and said, wait a minute, you should be, we should be talking about every site on El Camino because they were upset about Ricky's. And I said, well, what about the bowling alley? What about these other sites that are primed for development? The one over there by Twain Way and that, where they want to build, what, 30 units now and stuff like that? I said, this is, and the PC zoning, I had a moratorium on PC zoning in 2003. If that was in effect, there wouldn't have even been a chance to run up the Jolly Roger on that other idea, you know? It wouldn't have been even feasible unless, and that's what I advocate now, for, say, something like Buena Vista, a planned public-private partnership where you take current zoning, like the kind of values that they say these properties deserve, the $22 million for Maybell, or I don't even know if there's a price tag attached to Buena Vista, are based on a development scheme that I would not be willing to approve. So unless it were a public interest involved, such as, you know, Buena Vista, maybe we need to put 60 units of senior housing in an intergenerational project there, and instead of having 120 units, let's go to 180, if that's feasible, I don't know. You'd probably have to take the old All-American market there, but at least in that site, you have access to El Camino between the gas station and Baja Fresh and like that, you know, you, and you have, you're closer and you don't have the car dealer, Walgreens and all that. You're opposite the lot where Rudolph's, nobody could believe that they could build that big a project on Rudolph's. I think they can build an adequate project on Buena Vista that services many public needs, seniors.
As a council member, so you would lead that effort to...
Easily, yeah, I'd be happy to.
So I'm a little, going back to the Maybell Measure D issue, if I understand you correctly, you were saying that when the, when the project proposed as it originally was, got as far as it did through the Planning Commission and then to the council, that by the time it got to the council, it was too late to say, say this is too many units?
By the time, the final meetings, where I'm on record as supporting it, I'd say, this is well and good, but you're sacrificing the good for the perfect. We need the 60 units. I was willing to accept the building along Maybell, but I also said, you have to convert a rastodaro back to two lanes each way. If you're going to solve, the reason the traffic is unbearable on Maybell is because you've reduced the flow there for 10,000 cars a day on a rastodaro. And I went, we went through that at Gunn High School when I worked there with Imi Rodriguez and Gail Lichten. We said, well, your rationale is you haven't metered the traffic in Barron Park, you have 10,000 cars a day coming down this historical arterial, and you say you can reduce it to one lane and not reduce traffic time or impact on surrounding neighborhoods? You're on a fool's errand here, what are you talking about? And so, you know, that's the kind of thing that you, what I'm saying about synchronizing and getting things in the right order. But yes, by the time the Planning Commissioner said, this is a big project, why aren't the neighbors here? The neighbors should have been there since 2003. The neighbors should have been there when Ricky's went in and stepped forward and said, we have to watch this because we have these three sites, we have the Maybell site, we have the Vieira site up there by the bike path to, you know, where Zane McGregor has their thing, and then we have the Buena Vista, which has been living under the sword for at least a decade. So that part of town, and it's, the lot next to my place, because it was 9,000 square foot plus, and has a two-bedroom bungalow on the front and a one-bedroom studio on the back, sold for $2.1 million cash a few months ago. So even teardowns, if a teardown is worth $2 million in Barron Park, the development of a larger site, and that's what the housing element is wanting, those three-quarter acre sites for six, eight, 10 units to help produce these 2,000 units that ABAG wants. So, I mean, there has to be a lot more forethought and discussion, I think. And the people whose ox is going to get gored, the people in the neighborhood where the impacts are going to be felt the most, need to, need to be more alert and participate. And that's another reason why I support the nine-person council. I think it's easier to work with council members that you can talk to and that can argue the point. A lot of the talk is superfluous talk on Monday night. There's talk you can make with your fellow council people without violating the Brown Act that relates to what your ideas are about things, so you don't have to go into parsing out every sentence of a document when it's in front of the public. And that's another thing I'm running for, is at least in education, you not only stick on the clock, but you, you know, you time your agenda better, that the teachers, their primary concern is the students and the parents, and the meetings have to take secondary shift to that. So when you're on your own time, on the clock, in a meeting, you know, for accreditation or whatever, you hit the ground running. You don't spend that extra hour in a meeting like that, or the kids get short shift the next day.
So because we're kind of running out of time, I want to try to run through some issues with some fairly brief responses, if you can. We've kind of circled around the PC zone issue. I want to just ask you about a couple specifics there. How would you have voted on the J.JNF PC project in hindsight?
That's a tough one because I assumed that that had all been worked out with the family that was running the store. I think there are issues about the store, especially about the way Mickey's came down. You know, I would want a more proven, to call it a public benefit, I would want a more proven grocer in there, and not necessarily a big one, a Country Sun or Milk Pale, they're very good, smaller grocers, but I'd want one that could actually deliver on, if that was the public issue involved there, it's on the transit corridor, it's a walking distance to the train station, it's, and I used to live a couple blocks away. I lived right up college back when I was married in the 90s, so I know the neighborhood.
But at the time this was coming to the council, there was a proven store at J.JNF that everybody assumed would remain.
Yeah.
So would you have voted to support that application?
Yeah, probably.
More importantly, what have we learned, what have you learned from that, from the history of that particular project? Would you ever again vote for a PC that as a public benefit had something that could essentially fail?
Yeah, that's, I think that is the issue, and that's as I understand it, reading in your paper, is the discussion now with the PC zone. And something like Riachi is another good example of something that was seen as a public benefit, but now, and I would even look at the rent contract and see if they're leasing, you know, if they're basically leasing that open space and look at that, because that might be a public benefit that has been low-hanging fruit plucked from the tree. So I would, yes, I would definitely tighten up the rules and the definition of a public benefit.
And then if you had been on the council when the Litton so-called Gateway Project had been, was approved, would you have voted to support that?
No. And that's why I put the thing about moratorium in the transit corridor until high-speed rail is resolved. I think that's going to go to the Supreme Court, it's going to go to the California Supreme Court, then it's going to go to the National Supreme Court because it involves issues of eminent domain, property rights, and...
Your connection for me between that particular project and high-speed rail?
It's right there across from Alma. Is Alma going to be a one-lane street or what? But they made it a one-lane street for the, also, there's another thing, for over a year, what service fees did they pay to the city for blocking traffic on Litton and Alma for over a year by having all their construction crews out there and having a detour in the neighborhood and all that? I think some of these projects get designed that encroach on the commons with the idea that they aren't. And it's not a strictly property right if you're moving into the commons and if they're out, blocking a lane of traffic in Alma, a lane of traffic in Litton for over a year, but that whole area, the idea of the impacts, the same thing about when the Ariaga thing came up, 27 University Circle. I would have said, listen, we have a lot of problems here. We have the Stanford Hospital coming online, we have Ronald McDonald House coming online, we have the build-out at the shopping center coming online, how are we going to get people to and from the train station? I mean, we have, we have the elements in place, but we don't have a coordinated plan. And so I would have just said, no, and the downtown north people didn't want it. So I would have said, let's listen to the neighbors and say the timing there is off. You're going to have to put this on hold.
Running through a couple more issues, would you have voted for a car camping ban?
No, I don't think you can make living in cars illegal.
Okay, so no adjustments to that?
Oh, no, adjustments, but I think under current policing authority, especially disturbing the peace, all sorts of issues become involved when people are in a neighborhood sort of setting up camp or at Bullware Park or someplace like that. There's all sorts of issues under current code, I think, that can be dealt with. But when I was on the Urban Ministry Board of Directors back in the Berklo days, we made a point of saying that the centerpiece of any problem in working with people who do not have a fixed residence is case management. And more needs to be spent through community services, I believe, in order to manage an issue like that. And I wasn't sure that it couldn't be managed at Coverly, but there is a huge issue independent that might be on your checklist, the Coverly thing and the lease there. And that is something that's going to take a real effort by many different groups within the community and individuals in the neighborhood to come up, and especially the school district, to come up with a plan. And I say that because I worked there when the Mayfield School was there and the CETA Training Center was there. I worked for Henry Page in the Adult Ed School with the CETA Training to get kids' GED equivalencies, and it was a regional project supported by federal money. And so Coverly is an underutilized site that can be used for educational job training and community purposes, much better than it currently is.
Okay, so on Coverly, right now, there's kind of a stalemate with the school district and the city and the issue of renewing the lease with the covenant not to develop or without it, it seems to be a sticking point, and of course, the council's in favor of doing away with it. If you were on the council, would you take such a hard line with the $1.8 million?
Yeah, definitely, because I want to accelerate the process, the planning process. I don't want to give, put the pressure on, I guess is what I'm saying. I think the school district needs to make certain decisions about future enrollment and things like that, and how they want to participate regionally. Once when I worked at Paly, I was paid for by a concertorium grant through the Sunnyvale District. So they paid my teacher's salary to work with dropouts and pushouts when I worked at Paly. And that was after they closed the regional center in the H Building at Coverly. So I think the educational needs and the community needs in the city are big enough that will prevent development of the Coverly site. I think there's a public purpose that can be. Now, there might be room for, there's this issue, of course, that we're under, not the allotted acreage for parks, so some of the, I can't see that it's going to be amenable to, to building housing there because I do think between the Greendale site and the Coverly site, there's an educational and public need big enough because the city has grown tremendously. Mentioned that at the Rotary yesterday, the budget and the staff is almost doubled since I first ran for council in the mid-'70s, so...
You were advocating for reducing the staff by attrition?
Yes.
How much smaller do you think the staff should be?
I don't know because I, the two things I would want, first of all, the, the thing that I've heard in the meetings so far is the staff is getting quite senior. And so the trouble with an attrition-type approach means you might have people leaving too quickly, and then you can't shrink that fast. But where you can move people laterally, I would do that. I would, I would look at, if I were on the council, I would look at the performance reviews and see where we're really getting the bang for the buck.
Is there an overstaff department as far as you can tell right now?
I don't know. I asked Hillary Gittleman in a meeting whether she had her adequate number of planners pursuant to what we talked about at the beginning about how fast these things get rolling on a rolling start. And she said she has some senior positions that need to be filled, but my guess is there's nobody in the chain below that can be moved into there easily. So I would think in some areas of planning, it would be necessary. The mystery here is the performance reviews because I am unimpressed by traffic management schemes and stuff like that. So I would like to see how many people are working on that. But I was in a meeting where there was a guy sitting there that didn't say anything, and at the end, I asked him a couple questions about high-speed rail, he didn't know the answers. answers, so there's a job I could get rid of immediately, you know?
What's your view on how we, or whether we can preserve the retail environment on California Avenue in particular, but just in general, there is a diminished retail segment of our community?
Yeah.
And it's, the pressures are so much to convert those spaces to more profitable uses. Do you favor, for example, retail-only restrictions? Do you favor action to keep chain operations out?
Yeah, I feel that, I feel certain things can be done to keep chains out. I feel that the, the issue is it's been framed down at city halls as fake retail or foundations, you know, selling a few books in the front and taking up, you know, 10,000 square foot of place of, of what could be retail. The Institute for the Future there, for instance, I remember when it was a, sort of a department store, I remember when the, when, I remember a lot of different uses, you know? Because going back to the, when I first got here in the late '60s, JCPenney's was still downtown and, and things like that. And so I don't think we've been too retail-friendly, really, and that, that's another issue that needs to be rolled into the comprehensive plan, but I think it, it's apparent that relief needs to come before the comprehensive plan on that is done. So I would, I would definitely respond to restrictions on chain, especially on California Avenue, where I've heard people express that, and places downtown where, I, I don't think the landlord getting the dollar per square foot price that he set is the final arbiter of what retail is, I think. I think that there's a little more sophistication needs to be, because I, as I've said, I think sales tax is mighty important to the city, and I think that in that sense, mountain view between what they have out there east of Bay Shore and what they have downtown, a little too restaurant-heavy perhaps, has, has helped there, and they have better business on El Camino too in...
So the Institute for the Future in particular, that, that's an example of, of a use that you don't think should be allowed under the retail...
Not in that neighborhood, no.
And I assume the same thing with the proposal for the Varsity Theater?
I was behind the Save the, I was one of the people that helped with Save the Varsity. I wanted that a theater. I still wanted a theater. I would have zoned it a theater.
But under the current, what's your view of the current proposal? Does that fit our retail...
Ah, I'm not sure. It sounds like it's mostly focused on the courtyard, the thing that would be retail and that the building is, is more of an incubator or something. So I, no, I don't think that quite makes it by my standard.